Good evening. Hi. Welcome, everyone, to the Robinson Park Recreation Center and our second Central Library Earthquake retrofit and building repair town hall meeting. Thank you so much for being here today. My name is Tim McDonald. I'm the library director for the city of Pasadena, and I'm so excited to start this second meeting with you today. Bit of housekeeping before we get started. Do I have the advance on this?
Yeah, just on the list.
Oh, gotcha. Thanks. Okay. For anyone here tonight that is more comfortable hearing tonight's presentation in Spanish, Armenian, or Chinese, please, or the person near you, please raise your hand, and we will have a translator find you and assist. And thanks to Amber, Jack, and William for providing that service. Thanks a lot. There are a few very important people to thank before we start today's program. I'd like to take a minute to do that. Mayor Gordo and our city council have been tremendously supportive of this project, and I want to thank them for their support, formerly happening through their award of a design services contract for the retrofit and repair project that's underway now. We're very grateful for the terrific leadership we've gotten this city, the support for this project, recognizing that this is a vital institution to the city and a very important historic part of our heritage, too. The Central Library Community Programming Committee was established last year by interim city manager Cynthia Kurtz, and in hindsight, we should have named them the Visioning Committee because they really were the ones that developed the vision for the project that's underway right now. The mayor's technical oversight committee provides essential subject matter expertise on the structural methodologies that will be used for the retrofit, and they are giving us invaluable advice on the design. Pasadena Heritage sits on both of those committees, and we are very grateful to walk arm-in-arm with Pasadena Heritage on this very important project, and we value their collaboration, too. Thank you to K-Pass for being here tonight, filming today's event, so that anybody who wasn't able to attend can learn about this project and learn how to participate, too. City staff in both the Public Works Department and the Library Department, thank you for your endless resilience and hard work throughout this project and finding ways to continue services during the closure of Central Library during a period of great change. And most especially, thank you to all of you for being here tonight. We cannot undertake this project without hearing from you on the uses and programs that you need at the library and reaching out to people that aren't current library users, too, to make sure we're meeting their needs as well. So thank you for being here and being part of this process. Central Library served as a hub of educational and cultural activity in Pasadena for nearly 100 years. And in May of 2021, the city was forced to close the building after a building assessment determined that its construction from unreinforced masonry presented life safety concerns in the event of seismic activity. And since that time, the city's worked diligently to come up with the most cost-effective means of safely reopening the building so that the community can enjoy it again. The goal for tonight is to leave you with a better understanding of this project, and these are the topics we'll be covering tonight. So we're going to hear from our, we're going to meet the project leaders on this team and our presenters tonight, have an overview of the project timeline, the accomplishments so far, and next steps to come. You'll hear about the method of retrofit that was recently approved by the city council. You'll hear about the development of a community-driven review of the uses and programming space that could be possible in a renovated central library, and we value your input in that process. And the next step is talking about that community engagement process and how you can participate in it. Then we'll hear about next steps, and most importantly of all, an opportunity for you to present your questions and comments tonight. I hope that we will be able to accomplish all of this tonight. Big agenda. So let's begin. I'd like to introduce to you our fantastic director of public works for the city of Pasadena, Tony Olmos, who will kick us off and introduce the rest of the presenters tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim, and thank you all for coming out. This is such an important project, and I started in November of '21. The library was closed in May of that year. And one of the things that the city manager at the time, Steve Mermel, you know, when I was interviewing with him, he just told me about how important this facility is and what a high priority it is for the community, for us to get the proper fix identified so we can get this project going and then ultimately get the library open as soon as possible. So I knew from the very beginning, and obviously everybody that was here, that it's such a high, high priority, you know, for us to get this, for us to restore the library. So before I get into the timeline, and Tim already outlined the outline of what we're going to talk about today, let me just introduce members of our team that have been working really hard in getting the project to this point. So from our city staff, we have Chris Markaram. She's our deputy director, city engineer. And obviously, you've met Tim. And over here, we have Tio Sierra. He's our senior project manager. He does all the day-to-day work from the city side on the project management. We have Sarah Nush, that's also a project manager in our staff. She does a lot of interior design, so she's very involved with how this project's going to lay out from the inside. Not here is Hayden Melbourne. He's a principal civil engineer in our engineering division. That's, that's very, very involved with all the project as well. And from the consultant side, we have Deborah Gerard. She's right there. She's a partner with Grun &amp; Associates. I'll talk to them. I'll talk about them in a little bit. And I know we have Aldrin. He's a structure in KPFF. We have John with Heritage Partners. Then we have, we have Devin. She's with Grun &amp; Associates. So that's our project team. But my main thing today, so I can kick it over for what you're here for, is to learn about the project, is just to go over the timeline a little bit. I'm not sure if the clicker's here maybe. Oh, here it goes. Right here. There we go. What I want to cover for you is, I'm not going to go in the detailed history of it. I just want to just highlight what's on the screen here. So if you just kind of look at right the middle, you have the, you have where we are today. Tim identified what had happened before here, and maybe some of the key things I can highlight with what happened before then is when we discovered that the, that the building was unreinforced masonry. The walls are not connected, they're not reinforced, so the, so the top, the top part of the building is not connected to the foundation. It's just basically based on gravity. So that's why, that's why after we did an assessment, it was determined, you know, with a lot of evaluation consideration, that the library should be closed. At that time, that was in May of '21. So since then, we went and started, started procuring for services to get a design team on board, and we did that throughout. And at the same time, we also hired another consultant to give us an independent, independent reevaluation or an evaluation of the assessment that was done before, just to make sure that we're hitting the right place and the library should be closed. And the conclusions of that reevaluation came back consistent with what was done originally. So we felt very comfortable that, that, that the right decision was made to close the library, even though it was a very, very hard decision. So the city council in January of this year awarded a contract to Grun &amp; Associates and 13 other subconsultants to work on this project. The first order of business between January and now was to come up with design alternatives as to how we can retrofit this building. There was a lot of work that went into that. Tim talked about the technical, technical oversight committee that's made up, and you'll see the name of all the experts that are on that team. A lot of discussion, a lot of debate in terms of what's the best way to do it. We narrowed it down to three. We went to city council back in August of 21st, and they, they supported our staff recommendation, and you'll see what that is going forward. So we are now in, so now that's where we are. So we're still in the outreach phase where we're going to present these concepts to you, and we're going to continue seeking feedback from you in terms of how we can enhance anything. We're going to talk about programming and things that you still like to see, because what we're doing, we're retrofit, we're retrofitting the inside of the, we're retrofitting all the walls on the inside, and those walls are all load-bearing. So we're not going to move any walls. We're not going to expand any walls for any different use. We're basically going to leave the walls in place. Now, if there's some programming changes that happen, you might make a tweak here of the use here and there. The walls are going to be there. So that's where you can have even additional input in terms of what might go there, and Tim can cover that later. So here we are, and our plan, and we laid this out with city council, is we need to identify how we're going to fund this project. So we're going to have more conversations coming up with city council, and I'll cover that, next steps, in terms of how are we going to go about doing that, talking about a strategy. In '24, in November '24, there's a potential bond measure that would go out to the voters of Pasadena to help us fund the project. If that, if that's successful, then we'll continue the design and the permitting process through '25, and then we'll advertise for bids and get the construction going like we have it here, and start construction around the latter part of '25, and it'll take us about three years to construct with the proposed opening of the library in '28. So this is, this is all, this is all, you know, in the very big picture where we're going. There's a lot of things that need to happen for this to go out as planned, and we're just really excited about the opportunity, you know, to make this happen. So with that, I want to get right, get right into the presentation where we're going to talk about what this all means in terms of what the fix is. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deborah, and she's going to walk you through that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. All right. So this little section is going to talk a bit about the project background and starting with the project goals and objectives. So this was the very first thing we needed to establish. What do we really want to accomplish? What does the city want to accomplish? What does the community want to accomplish for this project? So it was obviously spurred by this need to seismically repair the unreinforced masonry. And so that's, and I use the term seismic. I should really use the term earthquake there. Similarity, similar words, but so, so we're trying to protect this building against an earthquake, and, and so that was obviously the main driver. But it wasn't the only driver. It's a treasured historic building in the city of Pasadena, and it was very important that we understand and preserve it as a historic asset to the city and that whatever we do maintains its historic listing and its historic essence. And we'll, we'll talk about that momentarily. It's not a terribly accessible building right now, so there's a lot of stairs involved in this building. There's even more stairs on the staff level than there are on the, on the public level. And so when we're going through a major project like this, it is incumbent on us to make this accessible. We need to allow people with mobility challenges to be, make it into the building and, and experience the building in the same way that someone who doesn't have a mobility challenge would. And, and it, I was recently mobility challenged, and I had a hard time making it in and around the building. So it's really something that's very important, to have universal design principles applied to this building. There's also a public benefit, and what we mean by that is that right now, this is a public asset that is not benefiting the public because you can't use it. We need to get this building back into public use because a beautiful historic building that cannot be used is not serving its intended purpose. And so it's really important that we reoccupy the building so that it can be experienced the way that it should for the community. There are certainly building systems we need to upgrade. You'll hear in a moment from John Lacacia about how these systems in this building, which are almost 100 years old, are original, many of them. It's amazing that they're still functioning, but it would be really irresponsible of us to go through all the things we need to go through on this project and not take the opportunity to upgrade those systems. So doing that to allow they're well past their serviceable life, like decades past their serviceable life, my lifetime past their serviceable life, and we really need to improve them. And at the same time, provide things that people come to expect, more outlets to plug in their laptops and their phones, Wi-Fi throughout so that people can have good internet connection and things of that nature. We want to make sure that we're leaving this building in a way that there's some inherent flexibility built into it. It's not, you know, we're just doing it now, and then you have to live with this exactly this way for the next 100 years. So as we'll get into a little bit later, all of the walls are structural, so we're not talking about moving walls around, but within those walls, there's some flexibility that we can and should build into it by thinking about it in advance and making sure that we're mindful of what will come next. And then cost effectiveness. It certainly is something that's very important as, you know, custodians of this city asset, of people who are looking out for how the city is using public funds. We need to make sure that everything that we're doing is based on cost effectiveness. And so the established criteria for us is the lowest cost that will meet the earthquake repair performance criteria, and you'll hear from our structural engineer shortly about what that means. So let me ask John Lacacia from Historic Resources Group to come and talk about the historic nature of this.
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, everyone. I know we're all very familiar with the library, but I just want to go over a little bit about its historic background, its history, and some of the features that make it so important and so special to the city. It is the northern terminus of the Bennett Plan for the Civic Center. It's one of the three anchors of the Civic Center and was the first to be completed. It was constructed between 1925 and 1927. It was designed by the architectural firm of Hunt &amp; Chambers, Myron Hunt being one of the most important architects to practice in Southern California in the first half of the 20th century. His offices were here in Pasadena. He designed the Rose Bowl. He designed the old Huntington Hotel, the Huntington Mansion and Library, so many important buildings, as well as several houses. His work is definitely considered the work of a master. The building, the library building, is listed in the National Register of Historic Resources and the California Register of Historical, I'm sorry, the National Register of Historic Places and the California Register of Historical Resources as a contributor to the Civic Center Historic District. It's also individually designated a Pasadena landmark. So I want to talk a little bit about the character-defining features of the library, what makes it so important. And just to, to, so everyone understands, character-defining features are those visual, those, those features are elements that give the building its visual character. So in the case of the library, the structural system is not visible, so therefore it's not character-defining, and that gives us the flexibility to go in and make changes to the structure while still preserving the building's historic character. So the exterior features, of course, are characteristic of the building's Mediterranean revival style, this, this combination of Italian Renaissance and Spanish that Hunt was a master at and that is, became, you know, people copied his style, and it became such a hallmark of Southern California architecture. The entrance courtyard with the art, with the, with the colonnade around it and the fountain in its center, the clay tile roofs, the smooth stucco walls, the cast stone trim around the windows and doors, beautiful wrought iron grill work, exceptionally fine craftsmanship, and this very deliberate entrance sequence, up the steps from Walnut through the gates into the courtyard, and then up more steps into the library itself, so that you were ascending to a place of, of knowledge. It was, it was all very symbolic and very beautifully executed. The interior also is very thoughtfully done. Hunt intended to have it all on one floor, with the exception of a few odd service spaces, because he thought stairs were a waste of money and a waste of space, and so he wanted to spread it out all, all on a single floor. All of the public spaces are on the first floor. He also wanted to make it accessible, as accessibility was understood in 1925, not anywhere near up to our standards. But it still retains this spectacular interior layout of, of very impressive cross axes through these high-ceilinged rooms, the cork tile flooring in, in the main hall, the, the beautiful oak paneling and bookshelves in most of the rooms, the textured acoustical plaster walls, which, again, was an early and innovative application in, in the 1920s, the coffered redwood ceiling. It's redwood and Celotex panels. Celotex was an early acoustical product, and it's made of pineapple fiber. It's all still there. And the decorative light fixtures, some of which are original and many of which have been reproduced after being removed in earlier years. And of course, the buildings, as Deborah said, the building's systems remain intact, which is shocking that the mechanical system is still there and still intact and still functioning. Not the most efficient system, but quite well-made, considering that it's 100 years old now. But these are the features that we are going to be taking care of and that we are going to be protecting as we go through this process, and we'll ensure that they remain and are back in place when the project is done.
It was mentioned earlier that there was a technical oversight committee that was appointed by Mayor Gordo, and this technical oversight committee had some very distinguished leadership in Dr. Paul Jennings, who is very well-known in the city of Pasadena and has served the, the city very well on various other volunteer committees of this nature. It was co-chaired by Winston Thorne, who was the past president of AIA Pasadena Foothill Chapter, and was representing both the architectural and the engineering viewpoint through their leadership. And then other members of the committee were some distinguished professors of Caltech, who are the people who really understand and do the research on buildings of this nature. Dr. Kohler and Dr. Heaton. And then four practitioners who are very renowned in Los Angeles, represent structural engineering associations, as well as leaders in their own firm. And I won't go through all the names. You can read them up there, but we had no shortage of input on what needed to be done on this project. So we, we met regularly, and, oh, I'm sorry, I, I should not forget Sue Mossman, who was very, very influential in making sure that we're always thinking from Pasadena Heritage, making sure that we're, we're always mindful of how the impact on the historic nature of the building would be, and Elizabeth Mull from Mull &amp; Polizoides. And, and so this technical oversight committee helped to guide us. We met with them on many occasions. We would review where we, what our thinking was, what our findings were, and, and they gave us feedback. And to talk more about that feedback, Aldrin.
Hi, everyone. Aldrin Aru with KPFF. I will be the structural engineer of record for this project and been working on this project since the late 20, 2020, when we first started evaluating the building. At the beginning, there was a set of very important structural criteria that was established that we needed to meet. That criteria, first and foremost, included reducing the seismic risk of this unreinforced brick masonry building. This type of construction, which the library is comprised of, was really removed from the code as an approved structural system after the 1933 Long Beach earthquake. After the catastrophic events that happened, a lot of buildings collapsed, and it was determined after that earthquake that that was no longer an acceptable code-applicable structural system to build. So that's why we're here today. That's really the, the main reason that spurred this project on. So we said, we need, we need to provide code compliance to the heavy concrete floors and roofs that the building is comprised of. That right now, as the building sits, it's not code compliant. We also said that we wanted to do a schemes and retrofit from widely accepted and established engineering standards, and we are going to be following the American Society of Civil Engineers seismic rehabilitation standards, which is a very, it's a nationally recognized standard and even accepted by, by, you know, worldwide in terms of what to do in terms of retrofitting existing buildings. Obviously, the solutions that we have come up with or we have evaluated needed not to impact the historic characteristics of the building. As John mentioned, there's very important significance historic, and we definitely want to be careful on the solutions that we implement not to disturb any of the historic characteristics of the building. We also, beyond code compliance, we also want to enhance the performance of the building to minimize future recovery time in an earthquake. The goal of, one of the goals of the city when we first started, they want, they want to keep this building for another 100 years. It's going to be 100 years, and they want this to last for 100 years. So they were also want, interested in what type of performance we can get from the different structural retrofit options. So the evaluations of the schemes, right, we considered numerous options. We considered, and strengthening methods, options considering to, you know, meeting the minimum compliance, what that would mean to an enhanced performance level of, of a building. Some of the options that, and strengthening methods we considered ranged from fiber-reinforced polymer sheet put on the walls to strengthen the walls, to core drilling, to base isolation, which is used right now on the city hall, to more conventional systems that included concrete shear walls and so forth. So all of these systems needed to, you know, as we evaluated, needed to conform to the criteria that I just mentioned above and to the city project goals. They needed to meet that as well. We presented those, we, all these different options. We presented, and to the peer reviewers, to city, the building official, to the technical oversight committee that Deborah just mentioned, and we incorporated the suggestions, and we finally came up to a, a, a solution that I think met all the criteria and the goals that we, was approved by city council to move forward in the schematic design level. And the seismic performance objective that we are now targeting is one that's equivalent to a new library building. You know, we weren't satisfied to just provide the minimum code requirement, but the, the goal and the objective is to have this building perform in a seismic event equivalent to a new building. And I'm going to let Deborah go into on how we plan to execute this, these methods and design approach.
And, and so we should just say a little bit more about what that means to be equivalent to a new building. It doesn't make it a new building. It just is a standard of evaluating the performance level, and, and it's certainly something that we can achieve here. I should also editorialize only slightly on how much we looked under every corner to try and find other solutions. It's our job as the architects to really make sure that we're pressing for what's best for the building, not just what's best for one aspect of the building. And so we looked at things that ranged from not touching any of the structure, we were not, that was not supported by any of the engineers, of the many engineers that we looked at, that we were working with, but it was something that we evaluated to see if there was another way that we could do this that was more appropriate. We ended up at this solution, which is, which I'll show you in a second. First, I'll describe what the walls are. So, so this is the existing wall construction. It's a very interesting configuration that Hunt came up with. There are two parallel brick walls, both of which are unreinforced. And when I say a brick wall, I should really explain that there are multiple layers of brick. And so we're using this term "weith." So it's really, the "weith" is a combination of many layers of brick together, interlocked together, that form up each side of this wall. So these walls are relatively thick, and, and they have a cavity in the middle, and that cavity is used for air conditioning ducts. It's a very interesting system. It is a way that the air conditioning was seamlessly integrated into this design. And so throughout the building, you have these cavities where ductwork is running, fed from the basement, and it's coming out through the air conditioning vents that are up on top of the bookcases, and these book stacks are also integrated into the wall. So it's a very integrated, very seamless approach. Most people would be hard-pressed to know without us pointing out how the air conditioning came into that space. And that's a really key feature and one that we think is very important to preserve as part of what John has identified as a character-defining feature of this space. And so the, the approach that we came up with is what we're calling the concrete shear wall approach. On this concrete shear wall approach, we are going to remove the finishes inside the building and do the repairs from the inside of the building. We do not want to touch the outside at all. That has a higher priority in the character-defining feature analysis that has been done, and so we're doing all of the work on the inside. And so the, the finishes on the inside are plaster up above and woodwork down below. And we know from our experience and And we know from our experience and the experience of our consultant team that we can carefully remove the woodwork, document it first, disassemble it, store it carefully, and put it back in exactly the same place. And we've done this before and we know that we can be successful in doing this here. So we're going to do that with the woodwork. The plaster that's above the woodwork, you can't remove that and put it back. So that will have to be replaced and John has indicated that that's an acceptable methodology. I'll also mention it is acoustic plaster, which is a special property of plaster, surprising again that it was used 100 years ago. And it's been painted over many a times. So when you paint over acoustic plaster, it no longer performs the way it was originally intended to. And so removing and replacing it is actually something that we can bring it back to what it was originally intended. So we're going to remove those finishes. We're also then going to remove the interior portion of that brick. So the interior waith of brick. So, and we will shore up the building while we're doing this so that it doesn't, nothing bad happens in the course of construction. So, and shoring just means that we're going to protect both sides of it so that if there was a, any movement during the course of construction that it's supported by this, these external shoring devices, which will then ultimately be removed. We'll put a new concrete sheer wall in place of that inner portion of brick. And so the same thickness as the brick so that the, at the end of the day, the inside face of the brick wall is in exactly, of the concrete wall is in exactly the same place as the inside face of the brick wall was. And then we're going to put the finishes back on. So we'll take the woodwork that we had carefully stored away and put it back where it originally was. We'll put new acoustic plaster up above that. And there's about a half a mile of these walls, all told. In this diagram, everything that's green is a new concrete sheer wall. Everything that's red is the remaining brick that will remain in place. And by doing this, we can support the building, support the remaining brick, and allow the interior and the exterior to look the same historic way that it originally did. So a lot has been asked about the cost of this. This is the cost plan that we presented to city council in August. And so the first category, category one, are all the things we have to do to be able to lift the red tag on this building. So it's not just a matter of putting the structure back, but we have to also put in a fire alarm and sprinkler system. That was one of the things, as you heard earlier, that sort of kicked off the discovery of the condition of the structure. We need to repair the leaky roof. You know, the leaks and a building full of books don't go very well together. And that's something that we need to do. And we also have to make accessibility upgrades, ADA, American With Disabilities Act upgrades. And these things are all mandated. So this is the least thing we can do to lift the red tag. The second category of things are things that we feel we should do. Upgrading or replacing the outdated mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, providing technology upgrades, making some tenant improvements. And that's really what we're trying to get to, to talk to you about. So that, that's the fun stuff here. And then doing some site improvements as well. And so we, Tony mentioned that we had evaluated three schemes. Well, we evaluated many more than three and we came down to three being the leading contenders. We called them a baseline scheme, a concrete sheer wall scheme, and a base isolation scheme. And through the costing of this, and these are what we call project costs. So these are not just construction costs, but these costs include testing and inspection and project management fees and permit fees and things of that nature. So this would be the total cost of the project. And you can see that the concrete sheer wall, it's not the cheapest, but it almost is. It's very close to the lowest cost scheme. And it's certainly lower than the base isolation scheme. And so let me just dwell on that for a moment. So the baseline scheme does not meet any of the performance criteria that Aldrin talked about. It is the lowest level of performance we could do to meet the minimum code, but it will not perform to this level of equivalency to a new building. And because one of the goals is to really protect this investment in this building, we need to make sure that for a relatively small percentage of fee, that we're looking at what the most responsible thing to do is. And one more thing that I didn't mention, and I just want to take the opportunity to. So I mentioned that Myron Hunt did this really clever thing of putting ducts in the middle of the wall. We need to replace those ducts. They're 100 years old. They're leaking, they're not very efficient anymore. They've got 100 years of crud that we'd rather not have circulating through the air conditioning system in the building. And by the scheme that we've chosen, we're actually accessing, able to access those cavities so that we can replace those ducts. So we always look for things that do multiple good, and this is one that does multiple good. All right, so now, that's enough of what the study is. Now we're looking at moving forward. So this is the place that we're at. I'd like Tim to come in and talk about the program development, which is where the fun begins.
We're going to post this presentation later tonight. I just realized there's one small correction we need to make in the top center column under sheer wall. You'll see the range before he goes 133 to 148 million. That's, the top range is not 148, the estimate is 153 million, I believe is the correct number.
The bottom number is correct.
Yes, the bottom number is correct. It adds up to that range at the bottom. Thanks. Program development. While we are very eager to reopen this gem in the civic center, this time period does provide us a window to reimagine the enhancements that can be made at Central Library, as a couple of the presenters have talked about tonight, and give us time for a community-driven review of the programs and uses of a renovated Central Library. Programming, not just in the sense of an event that happens, but all of the things that happen in the library. And those have changed in the last 100 years, obviously. So this period of reexamination provided the impetus for a community programming committee that was appointed last summer by interim city manager Cynthia Kurtz, summer of 2022. And that was long before the design team was even selected. This is a list of the community leaders who agreed last year to serve on that committee. And the members were appointed, as I said, by the city manager. And it represents community members with expertise and backgrounds in a variety of fields. Nonprofits, workforce development, historic preservation, library operations. Several library directors and former library directors served on that board, many of whom are here tonight, thanks for being here, and the media. The mission of the Central Library Programming, Community Programming Committee was to recommend how Central Library space can be reimagined to draw more people into the building and serve as a primary gathering space for the community, including artistic and theatrical events while remaining central, the central building of the city's library system. Over the course of the work, the committee developed a high-level vision for the library programming and uses. And they produced a report that includes several key recommendations that are noted on this slide and have been mentioned and are kind of in alignment with Deborah and John have talked about in terms of historic preservation, making thoughtful enhancements for the 21st century that are not impacting that very critical character-defining elements of the building. Making necessary improvements to accessibility. The library serves all members of the community and needs to be a welcoming space for everyone. We need to remain true to the mission of the library, the committee told us, as an information center and a gathering place. So we need to keep the books, we need to have shelves for the books, and all of our other resources. The committee advised us that we need to conduct interviews with the staff that know the building so well and make sure it meets their needs and will operate efficiently for them. We, we heard from them loud and clear that the engagement with the community should not stop with them, that we needed to continue a community engagement program with not just the people that are currently using the library, but the ones that aren't there yet and find out what, how can we better serve their needs during this opportunity to make enhancements to the building. We also heard to look for new and innovative ways to offer services at the library. As I said, I think earlier, we don't just want to be a library, we want to be the very best library for Pasadena. Important takeaways from the committee and some cautions that they advised us about are listed on this slide. Just gave away the first one, that we want the very best library services for the community here in Pasadena. World-class system. We want to make sure we're always adhering to the central mission of the library, you know, that we are supporting learning and literacy, particularly for our youngest residents, that we're providing open, free access to all, and that we are, have staff of professional qualified librarians that can give the very best service to the community. They advised us to avoid duplicating services that can be better served other places, that it would be better to have, to provide space for community partners to come in as the experts and deliver their services at the library to work in partnerships, rather than take on new work that is not, that we're not the experts in. They wanted to make sure we had a balance of dedicated spaces for single purposes and flexible space, which I think Deborah said better than I did just now, that we could have multipurpose rooms that serve many functions, whether it's events, meetings, gathering places, resource fairs, author visits, programs for young people, on and on and on. And finally, they, I love this last one, avoid the kitchen sink mentality. There's, we can't fit everything in the building, so we had to make some thoughtful decisions about what we can do best and what will fit in the building. The ways that communities use libraries have evolved. Digitization, audiobooks, streaming mean that even the most avid readers among us can utilize the library's services without even crossing our threshold anymore. And this evolution is not a threat to libraries, but it's an opportunity for Pasadena to, to model how library spaces and services can meet the challenges of the 21st century. The city has always been receptive to this evolution, knowing that we serve every member of the community and their needs are always changing. So whether this is providing resources to students for academic success, resources on early literacy to our youngest library users, opportunities for teenagers to have leadership opportunities and development, technology access and resources for job seekers and small businesses, and especially during the pandemic, but always we're hearing about the library's importance as a gathering place for seniors to reduce feelings of social isolation, and on and on and on. And these are all things that we need to think about as we're making these enhancements to the library. The library is truly an information center for everyone. Here's a snapshot of some statistics that I think tell the story with numbers too. And it kind of also point to that, those, that importance of the life safety issues we're talking about, the number of people that are in the building on a day-to-day basis. One statistic that astounds me, that's not on this particular page, is in the year before the pandemic, our beloved Donald Wright Auditorium on the east side of the building, 500 programs that year. So if you do the math, that's much more than one a day on average in that space. The library is a vital community gathering place. And that auditorium, as wonderful it is, it is, locks us into a very presidium format, audience lecture space. So while we need to preserve that space, can we add another that's more flexible, that allows us to do other types of programs? And that's part of the process that we're engaged in now in the design phase. One of the recommendations from the committee, that community programming committee, was to continue the outreach efforts into the community, as I said, not just to library users, but to people that aren't yet using the library. So I'd like to introduce, from Grun Associates, project manager Devon Barnes, who'll talk about our community engagement initiatives to date and our findings.
Leading off of what Tim was saying, this is so much more than a traditional library. It's what he was saying, it's a community hub. We've noticed that there's so much passion about this space and this library. So we want to engage the community, bring you updates, and take back input. We have one of our many consultants, our outreach consultant, Leslie Scott. She's right outside keeping the kids quiet. When they're not mine, I blank them out. We're working to covering areas, all areas in Pasadena right now. We're trying to get to everyone in different ways, one tonight. We're also, we, this is our second town hall meeting, we're going to be doing many more. We're also trying to do some pop-ups in different locations to get, this was our first town hall meeting. We've been at the farmer's market, really talking to a lot of people. A lot of people tell us their passions, their history with the library. It's really informative to us and, and we see how special and how much love there is for this library and the community. We were at the National Night Out, which was right in front of the library. Also heard a lot of different viewpoints there. And then I will put this back over to Deborah to hopefully hear some more.
So this is a list of, and it's a running list, of the input we're getting. And some of these things are functions that are already accommodated in the library, uses, spaces that are already accommodated. Some of them are very unique, new ideas. And we'll be trying to work together to figure out which ones of these can fit within the space that we have available and which ones are the most important to the community. And we believe that you all hold the key to helping us make these decisions. And so we're really looking for your input. All of these things, this, that are on this slide are on a board just to the side of Devon. And we encourage you, after the completion of this, which we've got like one more slide, we encourage you to engage and tell us what other uses are important to you that are not already identified. Or if there's something that you feel very strongly about, that meditation room is super important, please let us know that as well. And because that's how we're going to start to make the right decisions about how we use the space. And so we're, we're just about wrapping up. Tony will talk about next steps and then we'll open it up for some Q and A.
Thank you, Deborah. And thank you for really listening. I know there's a lot of information. And like Deborah said, you know, we're just about done here. But I just want to highlight just immediate next steps that are going to take place on this project. As I mentioned earlier, when I first was up here, we are going to go back to city council on a very important discussion about funding. So right now, we have a plan, and this is alternative. We have a plan for the first week in November, like the first city council meeting in November, to have a funding strategy meeting with the city council. They're very, very conscious and aware of how a project like this, and if we have to go out to the voters at some point for a bond measure, they're very, very concerned about that and sensitive. So that's why they want to have a conversation so that, so that they have a full strategy outline in terms of what can and can't be done. And as Devon said, there's also continuing meetings with the community. So we have our next town hall meeting right around that time. And we'll schedule more along the way as we move forward in this, in this project, as I laid out the timeline earlier. And ultimately, what we want to do is continue finishing this schematic design as we talked about. Also talk about the programming, you know, that Tim was talking about. There's a lot of moving pieces at the same time. And what we want to do is make sure that we share this information with the different committees, with our technical oversight, of course, keeping them updated in terms of where we're at with the schematic design. The program committee, knowing what the public is saying and getting some additional input from them. And then going out to our Pasadena Heritage and Library Commission and other groups that may come and request for presentations. We're always open to share any information that we have with anybody that wants to hear it. And ultimately, what we want to do is go back to city council, share, have this discussion about programming, have their input provided, and also share the schematic design with them, really towards the end of this year. As I laid out earlier, you know, for them to make a decision on some kind of bond measure, they need to have, we need to have some really good cost estimates by spring of next year. And so at least they can evaluate, make some decisions. Like Deborah talked about, the category one, category two, they would have to decide on those at that on those at that time to see what the numbers look like, and then ultimately make a decision. So we have to proceed on a very aggressive schedule and get the schematic design completed so that we can start getting some really good numbers, and then hopefully start getting council to get some decisions so we can move this into the next phase. So with that, I'm going to wrap up here, and I know that we want to hear from you now. And I'm not sure as far as the format, how we can explain that. Deborah will explain that, how that's going to work. But I really thank you for your attention, and thank you for being here once again.
All right, so now it's your turn. So we have a microphone that anyone who wants to ask a question or provide some feedback to us is welcome to go to. We are going to ask so that we have time for everyone to keep it to a couple minutes, and, you know, Leslie's near you, she'll yank the microphone away. I don't know what she'll do, but she's very nice, so she probably won't do that.
My name's John Furman, Pasadena resident. A couple of questions about the cost estimates. Do they include a 10% contingency?
Actually, they include a larger contingency than that.
Okay. Asbestos, are you assuming there will be?
Yeah, so we have had a hazardous material study done already. There is asbestos in the building, and it will need to be abated.
And you think you have sufficient cost?
And that cost is included in the cost estimate, yes, absolutely.
And then lastly, in your comparisons of different methods of reinforcement, you basically assumed you could not do anything that impeded the structural or the historic integrity of the building. But if you were able to do that, could you come up with rehab estimates more in the $100 million range than the $200 million range? I think it'd be hard for voters to support a $200 million bond issue.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask John to talk about the historic side of that and come on up, but while he's doing that, I'll talk about the cost side. So we have looked at the costs of doing something other than what we're doing, and the costs actually go up if you tried to remove and replace the building with the same building. But let me have John talk about why that's not something that we can really entertain.
So the library is a designated Pasadena landmark, and the city's historic preservation ordinance in the municipal code requires that the building be treated according to the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. So we don't have the option to do less than that in the treatment of the building.
The council could change the code?
That would be detrimental to all historic resources in the city if they chose to do that. We also have state law to contend with, the California Environmental Quality Act. If we were to do anything that had a significant adverse impact on the building, it would require an environmental impact report, which would take anywhere from two to three years and many hundreds of thousands of dollars at least to go through that process, and would open the city up to legal challenges if anyone disagreed with the findings of the impact report. So the, I don't want to say the easy way forward, but the straightforward way to approach it is to treat the building according to the Secretary of the Interior standards, which this approach will do.
And if the voters turn down the bond?
Then the city will have to figure something else out. I can't answer that question.
But Tony is here.
So in terms of the cost, let me just share that, right now, we're in schematic design. The costs are cost ranges that we came up with, because this is still in the very much early stages of the design. And one of the things that we tasked the design team, and this is what city council was talking about, was to still look for any ways that we can to reduce the cost. So that's what they're looking at right now, is looking for any ways to be efficient. And the question was asked about contingency. There's also design contingency that's in those numbers of, I think it's 30%, because we don't know what the design is, and as things get finalized and they get detailed, we'll be able to reduce that design contingency down. So at least, we're not going to come back later to city council and say, oh, by the way, it's going to be a lot more money now. We want to make sure that we stay within this range. So that's why it's still very much a range, and there's still more details to be worked out, and we expect and hope that we can keep it as efficient as possible, not add all a bunch of fluff so that we end up with something that's much more expensive than it needs to be. So we're really conscientious about that.
And just one more aspect about the SEQA and the environmental impact report is that one of the things that causes construction projects to increase in cost is time, and the more time that goes by, the more expensive things get. So if we did go down a path of spending a few years with an environmental impact report, whether or not there were lawsuits, there's extra cost associated with inflation and escalation as a result of that.
Bob Decker, I live on Linda Vista, I use the library, and I'm on the library associates' board. One of the questions I have for the structural engineers is, every year, we hear about the big one, and the real question is, given the choice you have to reconstruct the walls of the library, do you have any idea what kind of forces that a big earthquake will put on the building, and will it in fact survive, given that we're going to have one eventually?
Yes, we studied different earthquakes that could be accommodated by the different retrofit schemes, and like we mentioned, our objective is to provide an equivalent to a new building. Given the site location, our geotech engineer, geotech and geologists have determined that the earthquake that we're sort of designing for would be sort of an equivalent of an 8.0 and a Sierra Madre earthquake. So, and that's a probable event of the Sierra Madre, I mean, not the Sierra Madre, I'm sorry, the San Andreas. The San Andreas, Sierra Madre doesn't have the capability of an 8.0, but the San Andreas fault, the accelerations, the ground accelerations that we're going to be designing for, the performance objective that was selected, could accommodate what's expected from a San Andreas of an 8.0 magnitude.
Is the foundation of the library on granite?
It is not, no.
Okay. Is it fill?
Not to a, I think, very superficial fill. I don't recall the exact depth, but it's only a few feet maybe, but it's not.
Hi, I'm Zuff Velasco. I live in Garfield Heights, historic neighborhood, just a few blocks from here, and I live in a 1902 house. And I spent most of my career running art centers, cultural centers out of historic buildings, and had many small projects, much smaller than this. But what I love about what you've said tonight is how much you care about the integrity, the historic value, the design value. I think people don't design things the way they used to, and when you had a four-by-four, it was a four-by-four that was made out of redwood or some, you know, old-growth lumber that was as strong as iron, and then they get replaced sometimes with pine, you know, that's not four-by-four. And some of the historic buildings that I was involved with as a supervisor, we had concrete that was replaced after 100 years with lesser concrete that in five years was falling apart and cracking. So the devil sometimes is in the details, so I'm hoping you guys are going to be very careful about all those details, about the mix of the concretes and the, you know, those things that can tank a building after a few years after a very expensive renovation. But I absolutely love what you're doing and that you care so much about. I mean, it is a really important part of why I commute an hour to work every day, because I want to live here because of these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we do care.
Is it possible for us to use that sign tomorrow? Does it still lie there?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, if it is here, we can make sure that it looks back to you.
Yeah, perfect. We are happy to. Just in case everyone didn't hear, she wants to use our sign tomorrow at the Linda Vista Library for an event, and we're happy to share that, so not a problem.
Hi. My name is John Fawver. I grew up in Pasadena, I used the Central Library all my life. My children use it, my grandchildren have used it. It's spectacular. I have had significant engagement with the project staff, and they have been responsive and given information, transparent in interesting ways. But what got me into this was that we were going to have choices, and the first choice that came down is, it's $200 million or nothing. And that struck me as not much of a choice. So I started to try to figure out, is there any way that this could be more economical and still get full services? So as I looked into it, two ideas came out, which have not been explored, and that's what troubles me about it. And one of those ideas is that there is another way of doing the structure, which is called a post-tension device to hold up the walls, that serious engineers and architects think work and think can save a lot of money. And so that idea was presented in a loose kind of way in the conversation after the $200 million figure came out. And the response, first response to your credit, Deborah, said, I hadn't thought about that. We haven't really looked at it. I think that was Sunday, a few days ago. And more recently, we've got a report that says, we looked at it a long time ago, and it's no good. But it's not, that's not a very satisfying response, honestly. I mean, it's the kind of problem that you have to think about. And the reason for that, in candid and transparent ways, is that we're in a rush. We want to hit the 2024 bond issue. But the reason for that is not all that clear either. You know, it's not clear that we wouldn't get all right at another bond issue. It's not clear that studying that issue would prevent hitting the 2024 bond issue. And, you know, the thing, we're building a library to last forever, so we ought not to have a lot of questions that are still out there. So that troubles me, and I would urge that information to be provided to the city council in a way that people can understand it. And the basis that we hadn't thought about it before, but in four days, we've figured it out, is not entirely satisfying. The other issue that I noticed was the claim was that we have to go by the Secretary of Interior standards because of various designations. But as far as I could tell, and no one has really said to the contrary, the designations for the national registries do not preclude, we could abandon them, you know? What happens if we don't follow it? Nothing. We still, you know, it costs less. And the designation as a Pasadena landmark does have requirements, and it does require the Secretary standards, but there's, no one has said, we can't just do away with that. And doing away with it does not mean tearing down the library, it means having greater flexibility in building the library, making it just the way it is. It just saves a lot of money. Same response, it's too late, don't think about it. So those are what's troubling now, and I want the council to have every bit of information so that, so that when it's built, it works. You know, we're getting along without it, it's going to be seven years if we're lucky, probably a lot longer, and if we wait, it ought to be great.
All right, so give us a chance, and we'll respond to your comments.
Okay, great.
And, you know, I thank you for, you know, speaking your mind, and we certainly appreciate it. And so I'm going to let Aldrin talk about the post-tensioning in a second. First, I want to address the two other things you said about being in a rush. As Tony showed you, we're doing anything but rushing. So it is very atypical on any project. I've never worked, I've done this for a long time. All of the work I do are, or most of the work I do are large civic, complicated projects. I have never spent as much time upfront before we started designing as we have on this project. And that's just the time that we grew in, have been involved in it. And there is this whole period of time before we were ever involved, where the city was engaging other engineers to vet the prior reports and talking to compiling this panel of experts to provide their expertise. So there was actually a lot of time. The only reason that it may feel like we're rushing now is that we spent so much time to get to the starting point for when we can actually design. So we spent a lot of time trying to make sure we had the right game plan, and we couldn't enter into a project like this without having the right game plan. Number one, city council mandated it. They told us, don't start designing until you come to us with some ideas on how to seismically improve this building, and we, city council, get to say yay or nay. And so that all took, you know, a significant amount of time. So we have spent, you know, eight months or something on that order just to get to the point where we could start design, and that eight months was spent trying to make sure that we examined as many ideas as we could. It is true, I had not explored a post-tension idea, but Aldrin had in his prior review, and so I'll let him speak to that. And, so why don't you do that, and then I'll finish up.
Sure. Thank you. The method that you're referring to is it's a center core drilling method that, you know, you core drill through the top, you know, of the walls all the way down, and that is a method used in a lot of URM buildings. I wouldn't say a lot, but yes, definitely is a method used by engineers on that. In fact-
That's unreinforced masonry, I've learned. URM, right.
In fact, yes. In fact, we've used it, and we just completed a project in San Francisco in the Bay Area, I think two years ago we completed, and it's used, but it's also not applicable to every building. This is a unique type of URM building, as we sort of explained, there are cavity in the walls, there are double wides, these are 36-inch thick massive walls that have ribs in between them, and they have a lot of openings, and the walls itself has a lot of penetration. So there are some constructibility challenges, that's number one, to actually executing that. But secondly, foremost, it does not reach to the performance level that we have set for the project, for the project goals, right? There's a limit in terms of the capacity that you can get from that method. Once you reach that limit, we have to go to every method. In structure engineering, there's always limits to the certain fix or system that you put, and sometimes you have to go to a different system. So we did look at it back in 2020, early 2021, on our first evaluation. We did consider that method. When we looked at it, it wouldn't meet the standard that we have set for the building.
Is there any way we could see that work?
That's city, I mean, we have that report, and, you know.
Talk also about the support of the floors and roofs.
Yeah, we don't think also that's, you know, I think we can use that in conjunction, you know, if that method was to be used, and that would be limit, we think that would not also be code compliant in terms of supporting the roof. One of the things of these methods is used is in a lot of URM buildings. In fact, they don't have concrete floors and roofs. In fact, this is the only one that I think exists in the city of Pasadena that's built like this, and you don't see many of these structures, you know, with this type of construction. Most of the URM constructions, we visit Old Town all the time, and yeah, they're unreinforced masonry, but they have a light frame, wood roof system or floor system. And because of that, in order to be code compliant, you do need an independent gravity system, which the building doesn't have, and you would need to support that. We think that the core method, even though it does well from certain seismic enhancements, it does not address the gravity system that we need to address to be code compliant as well. So it would have to be a combination if we were to use that method, and that method could be applicable if the criteria, you know, was not set to that standard.
Thank you.
And just to reinforce what Aldrin said, because it might not have been obvious to everyone, this building has a concrete roof, so it does have a heavy roof diaphragm that has to be supported. And we probably could have gone into much greater detail on the structural system. We did when we met with council, and we met with the design commission, et cetera. But the concrete shear wall acts both to support the remaining masonry as well as to support the floor loads, so it's kind of dual duty. It acts as the support for those floor and roof loads as well. All right, so last thing that I wanted to address-
I had one other question, and that had to do with the decision to be bound by the-
Yeah, that's the last question I was going to address, yeah, absolutely. So in terms of that decision, you could do anything, right? You can- You can rip down a building, but every action has a consequence.
No, 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 we're not talking about that. We're talking about slightly easier standards, right? Cheaper, cheaper.
But the broader point is, you could say, hey, we don't care about this historic listing and do something different. It's possible. But every action has a consequence and we have to be prepared for the consequence. The consequence of doing something other than preserving this and treating it per the Secretary of Interior standards is very, very likely to be a lawsuit by someone, anyone, someone in this room, someone else. And that lawsuit will have to be addressed and dealt with. And I'm just saying, you're saying, you know, the city council could say, and it's no longer a historic resource, they could. But then there's a consequence to that action as well that would have to be addressed.
We could be sued for anything, probably will. Okay, thank you.
Sorry. And I just want to kind of give some context in terms of the city council discussion. So I would welcome everyone in this room and anybody that may watch this to go on our website and look for that presentation that was made to city council on August 21st. It was a comprehensive presentation. Then you'll see what the questions and answers were. There was a question about these historic standards that was asked by a council member and then you'll see what the council reaction was. And essentially what they did, they gave us direction based, after even if that topic was on the table, they gave us direction to support the staff recommendation as we outlined. So that's how we're approaching the remainder of the design, is we're following council direction. They didn't give us any homework to go out and study any other alternatives. They didn't want us to pursue anything about changing any codes or any standards of historic or whatever. So that's where we're at. That's how we're operating. We're operating based on council direction. I just wanted to share that.
Hi, my name is Felicia Rusnak. I checked the California Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program. They said you should expect to pay no more than $10 per square foot for a complete retrofit. The library is 120,000 square feet, so times 10, that would be $1.2 million. If we wanted to do a generous over of that, that would still come out to $12 million. This has a feel of a Ferrari rebuild, reimagining of the library and we just want a Honda Civic retrofit. We don't, if there are libraries that are oddly configured, just close them off and don't use them. We don't want the library rebuilt. If we wanted to have it rebuilt, we would just build a new library. So I think we should set a budget, a reasonable budget, maybe $20 million and see what you can do for that. This, first there's saying 100, then I heard 111, then I heard 200, now I'm hearing 250 million. The prices haven't stopped going up yet. I imagine they aren't going to stop going up. So again, just think Honda Civic, not Ferrari, please, on this rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. I will just say, it's been a long time since you could do anything for $10 a square foot or even $100 a square foot and certainly not do the retrofit of this building. But thank you for your comment. Certain things don't scale up exactly.
Hi, my name is Anshaid and I just have a question because I, and I don't think, it may not have any bearing at all on the structural issues, but I just remember seeing photographs of, you talked about the brick walls, the double, two brick walls with airspace in between. But as I recall, there's also a concrete frame, sort of a grid, is that correct? Of concrete that's going both vertically and horizontally in the structure, is that correct?
Not entirely. There are horizontal concrete beams.
Oh, okay.
There is no concrete frame. It would be a different system and a different retrofit and, you know-
You're just talking existing.
So it's just sheer bricks, no concrete anywhere in that, in those walls?
There is concrete. The concrete floors at the levels and there's bond beams, they're horizontal, but no vertical.
Oh, so there are horizontal then?
Yeah, there are horizontal bond beams which may be, like I said-
Yeah, okay. That answers the question.
But it's not a concrete frame, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
One more quick question. You mentioned the concrete roof-
Yes.
-presenting problems and additional cost. Could we get rid of the concrete roof?
Aldrin, I'll let you speak to that also, but I think it's pretty much required at this point.
Yeah, the concrete is an important part of the seismic performance of the building in the top. If you do a wood from, I don't know, if you may not have the strength, a wood roof would not have a seismic strength that's required from these heavy walls. So concrete is important for this building to behave and perform as we want it to behave. And in fact, we may be retrofitting that concrete roof because it's low concrete strength, very little reinforcement as well. It does have reinforcement. So part of the retrofits, not only the walls, but part of the retrofit is the, what we call the roof diaphragm, which is what really supports the walls in a seismic event and transfer forces to the other one. So it's very important that we have a concrete roof on this particular project.
And I don't think that we were saying that it was a problem as much as because it exists, we need to support it. And so the diaphragm that he's talking about keeps those walls from folding together. So it's part of the stiffening of this building. And these are very tall walls, they're very tall spaces. Sir?
My name is Arnie Siegel. I'm a former chair of the Library Commission. I'm a former chair of Pasadena Heritage and I have been on the advisory committee that the council pointed about the uses of the library. I don't think most people in Pasadena want a Honda. I just disagree with that 100%, you know? That might be that one woman's opinion, but it's not everybody's opinion. The worst mistake that Pasadena ever made was tearing down the buildings on Colorado Boulevard and building the Paseo. We are still paying for it. And we need, cannot make that mistake again. We cannot make that mistake again. You know, I don't know, it's going to cost a lot of money. Lots of things cost a lot of money today. It's unfortunate, but it's the world we live in and I wouldn't assume for a second that people won't vote for a $200 million bond issue. We need to do this right. We do not need to do this quick and cheap because look how wonderful City Hall turned out. And we spent a lot of money on City Hall. So I just urge, you know, go ahead and do it the way you think we need to do it to make it the building that we all will love and support.
Thank you very much.
Say it again?
I remember how much we spent on City Hall.
About $130 million?
$130.
And that was when?
Eleven, 12 years.
That was when?
10, 15 years.
When?
2007.
2007. So how much would that be today?
Thank you very much. Well, that was a great comment to end on. If no one else has any comments, I'm kind of liking that. So thank you, thank you all for participating in this. Thank you for your feedback, even, you know, those of you who have adverse things to tell us, we need to hear what you have to say. We're very interested in your point of view. Yeah, we would like you to come and engage with this board and provide your feedback on the spaces and the programs and the uses that you'd like to see in this building. And thank you again for being here.